The regular meeting of the Uciresir City Council for April the 2nd, 2019 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. If you remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like to take the time to remember Don Wilson and his passing this Saturday for all the years of service to the Uciresir Qualanis Club. He was so instrumental for all the things that we did over the years. We'd just like to take a second to remember Don and his family.
May he rest in peace.
Go home, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucco.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the March 19th, 2019 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to accept the March 19th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. You also have before you the minutes from the March 25th, 2019 public hearing that was held. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the public hearing minutes from March 25th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. And our first speaker this evening is the mayor, Mayor Easert.
Well, thank you. We have a couple honored guests scheduled here. One's here so far, and I think the other one might still be in spring sports. I'd like to call Mr. Todd Spurlock up. And Coach and Mom, come on up too. We're gonna come right over here. For... For those of you who don't know... We're gonna come right up here and face out this way. It's a... If you're a high school athlete, one of your goals, I think, is to be maybe a league champion and to do well and have fun. But we have in front of us tonight a state qualifier for 2019, 2018, 2019 bowl state bowling tournament. And I believe, Mr. Todd Spurlock, that you were the first bowler in the history of Uciresir ever to qualify for the state tournament. Is that right?
I think so.
Well, that's something to be very proud of.
And also in Crawford County.
In Crawford County too. Well, that's what we want to honor to you. I have a little proclamation here on the report and commend you. Do you want to introduce your guests?
Okay. Ms. Mike Coes, Diane Campbell, Cable, and my mom, Carrie Young.
You're welcome. And Diane Cable is a longtime bowler herself.
Yeah.
And runs in the family, right?
I was thinking. I've got to build up when I was three, so... A long time.
Yeah, but you never been to the state tournament because there wasn't a state tournament.
There wasn't a state tournament, so this is awesome.
Yeah, and Mom, how did your son become such a good bowler?
It was just years of being in the bowling alley. He went to Pepsi quite a few years when he was 11, so he just progressed as he got older.
And you're a junior. You expect big things out of you next year, even bigger. And what's the plans after next year college bowling?
Yes.
Great, wonderful. Well, the city of Uciresir is proud of you for your accomplishments. It is in rarefied air that you have competed, being just one of an impressive group of athletes who have reached Ohio State Tournament level. Your recent performance makes us appreciate all the hard work that you and the coach Diane Cable have put in to showcase your talents at such prestigious tournaments. The sport of bowling, I think, is alive and well in Uciresir. It's evidenced by your accomplishments as well as the young adults that have done so well in the Bill Rain and in the women's invitations. So we want to thank you for being an inspiration to your teammates and to your fellow citizens of Uciresir. Keep up the good work. We're very proud of you. I know you're a man of few words. You want to tell us some secrets, bowling secrets? Okay, we're gonna get some pictures here, so... You want to grab one of them and I'll grab the other. Gotta get all the pictures. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay with the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good care. We have one more if you get there, Michael.
Work them out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pre-Casey Depple, he's here for a court delivery report. And all sorts of things to tell us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll bounce around the room a little bit, so I'm gonna make Gary work up there if I can. And what I'll start with is the statistical report, which you have in front of you. I said it now somewhere, but I've memorized it already today. I'll tell you this, as much as we hear about society coming apart at the seams, everywhere you look, every venue you look, society is not coming apart at the seams here. Society is together in Crawford County, and things are happening in tremendous improvement that you don't see. And it's in the statistical report. Last year, we were under 10,000 calls per service for the first time that I could ever report. And that pace continues. 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019 first quarters also showed the same trend of a reduction in calls per service. The police reports themselves also have trended down. There are areas for concern. There's always going to be crime. Anyone who thinks there won't be problems, I think, we know there's always been problems. As long as man's been on this earth, there's been problems, right? And what... And I was talking about, the police are not perfect. We're people too. We just are here to do the citizens, we're citizens too. And we share the concerns you have, and we have the same concerns in our own families. And first and foremost, in Crawford County, we face the epidemic of addiction. And in Crawford County, in the first quarter, I want to say thank you to the Adam H. Board for a $20,000 grant which afforded us the quick response team, or opiate response team, if you will. And I'll get into this a little bit more, but these door hanging pads, members of our police department and volunteers in our community have been going around to people that have overdosed and offering them the opportunity to seek intervention, a choice other than jail, death, or more suffering for their family. Because for the past three years, our people in our community, people out there that have experienced suffering have taken it upon themselves to try to encourage others to go seek help rather than wait until the officer has them in the back of the police car. Intervention does start in the jail cell. It does start in the back of the police car, but it also has started in our lobby. People have come into the police department asking for help. Just yesterday, 5:00 in the evening, a young man came into the department. He had been in an overdose. I, as the officer, asked him for someone to bring an art can to his car in a parking lot three weeks earlier, and he went to jail. He was caught up in a situation of criminal activity. And we'll see what happens. But yesterday, he was here saying, "Oh, by the way, I am interested in talking to you about some help." So there is... The heroin opiate prevention effort is happening here. It is working. We do have the Adam H. Board supporting us. And now we are involved with Crawford County Municipal and Common Police Court. And we met with the Crawford County Bar Association. And this week, we had two individuals diverted from their sentence in the Crawford County Justice Center to Teen Challenge, which is an intensive inpatient program. They've taken it upon themselves rather than sit in jail, not being productive in our county jail. And they are going to work hard on improving their situation at Teen Challenge. It's hard work. They're gonna work harder at Teen Challenge than, you know, three males and a cot at the jail. That being said, I 100% want to encourage everyone to keep our jail funded 100% the way it is today. We... Our crime statistics, which of reduction of over 50% burglaries, larcenies, thefts, overdose deaths. We are now at the opposite end of the state of Ohio per capita of overdose deaths. And that is a direct result of the action of volunteers in our community, a judge who says there's no way we can't have consequences for this behavior, and law enforcement that has said enough is enough. But we make... It's not... It's easy to just lock somebody up and throw away their key. The hard thing for people who wrap their heads around is that law enforcement also will help you. Law enforcement, members of law enforcement don't just automatically buy into the idea. Detective Keegan was there at the window when the man came in yesterday. How do you feel about that when somebody comes in and is like, is that something when you came up in the police academy you thought you'd ever see? But it was a surprise. Especially from that individual, wasn't it? That's somebody you might... We're hardened police officers, are we not? We've seen the worst of the worst, and that's somebody who's probably hardened by prison. And maybe we see a little limerick hope. I think that's what we're fighting for. Otherwise, we'd be... I guess it gives us hope because we get discouraged if we don't see some hope out there. And I want to thank... Well, Detective Keegan's here. Could you come up here with me, please? Yes, I'm gonna embarrass you. Quick transition. We're gonna talk about distracted driving awareness, but I want to... While Detective Keegan is here, he's the commander of the special response team for Crawford County. And when I talk about society appearing to come apart at the seams and all the garbage that's thrown at us every day in the news, that's not reality. The reality is what you see in Gallion, Crestline, Uciresir, and in the rural areas of Crawford County are all the law enforcement officers who represent their families, their neighbors, their folks just like you. We all pull together to protect our county. And when did we start the special response team?
About four years, probably five years ago, I think we became an SRT team, a full-fledged one, a double team.
And how many hours a week do you train?
You mentioned that microphone, round that direction, yeah?
We're always doing some sort of training, but we have to get in at least four hours a month, 30 hours a month, is what we try to get in. The number you're trying to get in for the year is 96 hours of training for the SRT team. That's just specialized training, just for what we do. So then we have guys that do stuff on the phone to get those hours in. So we have certain things that they can apply for, going over different laws and procedures and stuff like that, keeping themselves fit, just other things like that. They get even more hours for the SRT team, which keeps them ready to go when we have to get called in at any time.
We joke a lot about donuts, don't we?
Yes.
But we're not spring chickens, are we? I think our department has fitness every year, and I look at the SRT team, and most of the officers are actually senior officers, but you're some of the fittest officers I've ever seen. And yes, Bill and I talked about the auxiliary from the 1970s. I wasn't quite that old. But are we more fit today than the staff we had in the 1980s? No offense to them. I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, I've seen a lot of changes, definitely, for the better. Yeah.
We train hard because we don't want to have to use force. And in the numbers, you see reduction in crime, but the reflection of the reduction in crime is from applying resources towards advanced training. Our officers are trained better than they ever have been, and they need to be trained more. And the investment in training is a direct result of investing in our justice center. People in Uciresir ask me, "Well, I'm looking at my tax bill. Why am I paying for the Crawford County Jail?" Well, in town here, if we don't have that jail, we used to have a jail in City Hall. We don't have one anymore. And when people break through windows, they trespass onto your property. I'm talking about petty crimes. When they shoplift at our local stores, they commit those crimes. If there's nowhere to have consequence for the offenses they commit, they don't see any consequences and they commit them, and we rearrest them. And that's what we saw in the 1980s and 90s when the jail was temporarily closed. There were over 700, 800, maybe 1,000 people that had committed crimes that had nowhere to sort crimes. They saw no consequence to what they did. And I think for a good decade after, we felt the consequences of that was petty crime. And I think by adding our justices with the jail built, we've kept the jail full, unfortunately. It's not a good thing to have to keep the jail full. That's not a sign of a healthy community. But crime has reduced. We're doing some tremendous things with our school resource officer program, learning movement watch. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a few more minutes talking about our social services, but the social service network in our community is stronger than it's ever been. And that's part, it is the hard things are doing those soft things that keep people out of trouble. So it goes hand in hand. So we can't just look at a reduction in crime and think that we can not support the funding that goes... If we cut our funding for the jail, our training for our special response team is gonna be cut, I'm afraid to say. And that directly impacted us having a face-to-face encounter with evidence of drug cartels from Mexico in Crawford County. I can't get into that more with you, but you should be terrified with knowing that cartel activity was in Crawford County. It's been in Crawford County longer than you want to know. That's the reality of it. I don't think I can sugarcoat it. Should I sugarcoat it? No, I shouldn't. Because that's somewhere between $5 and $15 million of economic impact in our county money that just leaves. We just had a police auction. Crawford County monetizes drug trade with product. Probably unreported crime was not. That was probably property that was monetized to $5,000 or $7,000 happened in unreported crime, traded for drugs. And that's directly tied to illicit drugs that were transported from out of country. And our special response team trains to have encounters with those individuals. And I want to say a big thank you to Chief Satterfield, Sheriff Kent, Chief Shook. And Crestline is now contributing to Crestline participating in the team. It takes a group effort because we're small departments. We all have to share resources. We're not wealthy by any means, none of us are. But together, we've put together a great team, and we've done it great.
What we've had, and we started out small, and we had stuff donated to us. You could probably see the bricks truck, and we was able to give that, we utilized it. And we started that team, we're not using just a replica carburetor van. Nobody's doing search warrants in a regular van. So then we moved up to Samara, and we lifted the Humvees. We used the lawn since it's armored, so we were able to keep our guys safe. And that was all stuff that we was able to give through either grants, or they would give it to us with luck or something like that, through different programs. So we was able to work with that stuff. Some of the equipment that we have, there's a very good welder in there in Gavin at their bar club. He's welding this up into tools. So we utilize something that we can get, and we're good enough, you know, we have on the team. Sort of related with the more stuff, but each one of us kicking something. We keep the Humvee up, share some fun, we keep the SRT vehicle out, you know, flash trains and stuff like that, share some fun. It's really good keeping that up because you want one agency to have control of that stuff. So everybody has their part of it that they're kicking in good.
And in the first quarter of this year, we had some of the most intense encounters that did involve drugs or warrants. It involved our school resource officers indirectly because it involved juvenile crime. And I want to bring that up as well. In the activity report, we see a reduction in activity, but we also have to... It happened in two areas. We have reduction in legal service, which is income tax cases. We also have reduction in traffic stops. We have two... We have one fewer police officer in... Oh, our... One fewer police officer. Two police officers are full-time working with juveniles, so they're not making traffic stops. So I think that explains that number itself. The rest of the department is making the same amount of traffic stops per day. If you look at it quarterly, 190 some traffic stops in the first quarter. Yes, the officers are out there watching you. If you drive too fast, you get stopped, snow down, it's distracted driving law. But that being said, the school resource officers are doing a lot of work that doesn't appear in a statistical report because they're doing interventions as well. Juveniles are not going to be held in jail. They commit, in this case, it was a serious felony. Well, one of the first degree felony that someone could do, 10 to 25 years in prison. And the SRT, do you want to explain how that happened?
You know, it just all came about. You know, the guy was on juvenile, he's on an ankle monitor, you know, he's not supposed to... He's house arrest. Of course, juvenile court gets a pin on his ankle monitor that he didn't have to. It's another area. They knew that's where his girlfriend was, so they wanted us to go get him. So this leads to going to try to make contact with him, can't get a hold of him, run away. Dad finally gets home, he lets the officers in, and they discover that she was assaulted. He would let her leave the house, and he was still in the house, but he got access to dad's guns. So now he barricaded himself into a house that belonged to somebody else. So then they had to call us in to try to get him out of the house. Luckily, he seen what was coming down his way, seen everything developing outside, and he decided it was time to give up. Once we started talking to him, we were getting him to come out. So they had to give us the assaults that we wanted, and we got hurt, and we was able to talk him out, which is what we tried to do first. You know, you don't want to go hands-on with somebody if you don't have to. And so everything worked out well. But she was saying, he's a juvenile, and he goes and spends a day at juvenile court. And he goes down to the detention center down there for a little while, and they decided what he'll do with you from there. But he's not gonna get the same thing as on the law.
In a case like this, we call Gallion in Crawford County and anyone else for mutual aid, and we'd rather go with more security than not enough security and be in a threatening situation after use force when we present an overwhelmingly secure presence, but likely that abusing force is reduced immensely. And we're grateful that there was no force that was necessary in that case. Is there anything else we can talk about coming up with the SRT team? Continue training?
Continue training.
And we do pledge to keep working hard and keep the jail full with anyone that... And we also pledge to keep working hard with our quick response team. And anyone that does not want to go to jail can ask for Operation Hope. And a couple of our officers, one who's on the SRT team, actually completed recovery coach training. Totally different spin on police training. I myself never thought I'd play the role of a sponsor for someone going to alcohol synonymous and narcotics synonymous, but we've been thrust into that role, as many in the community have. And it's actually been... It's actually probably extended my career as far as I feel like a new officer. Because it's just... It's invigorating to see something good coming of the work. And I think you saw it once or twice yesterday, when somebody comes to the window actually asking for help, it's not the same routine. It's not like you're spinning your wheels and not seeing any progress. And there's hope in that. You know, it sounds cliched, but there's hope in that, right? The individuals from search warrants or from arrests have been in recovery coach training and are now helping others stay out of trouble. They're clean and sober, one year, two years, five years, they're in our community, and they're helping others stay out of trouble. Our overdose fatalities are down. They're still happening, much less often. When I said there's concern in the report, it's methamphetamine. People don't actually rationalize that it's logical to use methamphetamine rather than heroin. And methamphetamine is just as dangerous, just as damaging to your body. We saw it firsthand yesterday. It keeps us busier. Our disturbances in domestic cases, assaults, all have gone up slightly, but it keeps us busier. And I think we'll see disturbances in property crimes go up slightly. It's just... It's a different disease. It's part of addiction. And any other trends on methamphetamine that we can...
You just... You know, you're gonna see the difference because heroin, you know, that made it like... They've done that a little amount, of course, to the point where there's overdoses and dying. Methamphetamine does the opposite. It keeps them tweaking, making their way off for days, and they don't know what to do with themselves, so it's mostly jammed up and so they're in trouble. And then the other SRT call off that the chief was referring to, that was a guy that was on the... We had to talk to him. He had enough sense in his head there that if they had to come on out and take care of it, boy, he got myself into. But that's what we were dealing with with him, because he was on the meth high for seven days. So that's how he got to get away.
I know I'll throw a lie at you, but in a way, this is much longer than we had for the year-end report, but the first quarter of this year, this is kind of how it's been incredibly busy, hasn't it? And again, none of the statistics lie, and liars use statistics, something like that. But it keeps people up all the time. We had somebody up for four days straight. Actually, at the hospital, somebody was up for four days straight using methamphetamine. Our officer in the role of crisis intervention trained officer, SRT officer, knows the individual from prior domestic calls, and the officer knows that Operation Hope is a resource. This person on methamphetamine but coming off of, let's say, detoxing from methamphetamine is different than detoxing from heroin, is now in rehab in Fremont. We don't have much residential rehab in patient in Crawford County. We have, again, grassroots effort to have some beds in Crawford County for that. There's a great program in Fremont that was started called Surest Path Recovery. 24/7, we take people in, and so they converted nursing homes for men in Fremont, converted nursing homes in Glinda, in Crawford County, for women. So our officer called Operation Hope, called Operation Hope to get a volunteer who took individual... He wasn't gonna go to jail. The hospital wasn't gonna keep him. He was gonna go straight back in the street and probably lead to one, two, or more police calls. So why not at least go there and get some professional help? So we'll see how that turns out. Real quick, we might as well transition to distracted driving, correct? And let's hold this up. This is our gift to the city for us, the front porch mayor.
Can you bring it up here so Gary can get a picture of it? Do you need help?
Yeah.
Gary, can you get that?
He says, "Move this way for him."
Go further, keep going.
There you go.
All right. So we'll ask if this be posted up front. There's more that we'll have at the parks and at the schools, but 94% or more crashes are driver error, and more and more crashes are simply because of distraction with you. And it's not just a cellphone. Who's looking at your cellphone right now, other than the news media? Okay. You looked right back down at it, didn't you? So it's so challenging. In your car, you have a... You probably have other distractions. In your car, the size of the phone, you have the radio. And there's so many different distractions. I, I gave the National Safety Council, uh, information to, uh, Kim and Jerry there, so we'll publish that on Facebook. I'll talk more about it tomorrow. We'll have, uh, Facebook Live, I'm gonna try to do a chat with the chief and see how embarrassing our community is. Gary, will you help me with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So anyone listening, if you want to, uh, throw some questions my way, type the questions in, I'll try to answer your questions. Captain Grayhouse and Lieutenant Dorsey are with the Ohio Crime Prevention Association this week in training. They're going to be, uh, certified crime prevention specialists. They're, they're, uh, their focus, I'm sure, is going to be crimes against seniors. Thirty-one percent or fewer households in Crawford County have children under age 18. Delaware County has 41% or more homes with children 18 and under. We're an aging community, and most senior crime is unreported. So I'm afraid also the numbers here look like they're going down, but in the meantime, I did spend time on the phone today about a, a young lady who might have things stolen from her home, money stolen from her home because she's elderly and is losing her capacity to be aware of her surroundings and time. And her family's not aware that maybe the neighbors are taking advantage of her. She's a nice person, and she lets anyone in her home, and maybe, uh, people are going to take advantage of that. That's just one small example of what could happen. We ask everyone to watch their neighbors, part of the neighborhood watch, and that's why we're having a chat with the chief. We're going to have Captain Grayhouse and Lieutenant Dorsey come back, and they're going to have a boatload of, uh, talks they can present in different neighborhoods. We're going to try to have more neighborhood talks. The weather's, obviously, it's, it's that time of year, we need to get out and have neighborhood talks. We have to avoid scams online, scams on the phone. Who's had a phone call lately? I mean, once, who's tired of the phone call, right? Unbelievable. The telemarketers are out of control, and seniors are targeted 80% of the time. Seniors, seniors are lonely and they don't want to hang the phone up. And, uh, it's not too rude to be shrewd. It's, it probably best, when you receive a call that you don't know who's on the other end, to hang it up. Hard to do. And if you have a, a senior who you love, probably talk to them about hanging the phone up so they don't lose their mind or their identity. And, uh, can't say that enough, so, uh, we'll talk more about that this year. The explorers are going to, the police explorers, our host of, uh, young future police officers are going to state competition this Saturday, they leave Friday. So we wish them all the best. School resource officers Stahl and Motta and Captain Stevens are going to be chaperoning them, coaching them, and they did great last year. We'll look for some video of what they do at the state competition. They're excited. And I want to say thank you to the foundation for Crawford County for a $3,000 grant award to keep the explorer program funded. So we're very happy about that. And I'm sure I could go on. But you're looking at me like it's kind of, where's the hook, right? Get them on, okay? It's 7:30.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your, your words, and, um, it's always something to learn about our community.
Thank you.
Anyone else for address council this evening? No one? Moving on, communications and petitions, we have none this evening. Our standing committee reports, Busires City Joint Regular Committees met and ready for session on Thursday, March the 21st, 2006 p.m., God bless you. And, um, Mr. McKeever, would you like to get us started, please?
Sure will. Now, we met Thursday, March 21st, 2019, 6:00 p.m. to 7:04 p.m. Members present, myself, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Monica Sack, Doug Foat, and Andrew Shaw. Number one, Busires City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called ordered by myself at 6:00 p.m. Public participation, there was none. Order of committee business, A, plating committee met 6:00 p.m. to 6:12 p.m. Zoning variance notification protocol. Members present, Monica Sack, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Zoning, number one, zoning variance notification protocol. The committee received a letter from the City Board of Zoning Appeals expressing support for a committee proposal to modify the notification protocol by posting the board's meeting details on the city's website, social media account, and access TV channel, as well as requiring applicants to post a sign on their property with the same details. The board passed a resolution of support for posting of signs on the applicant's property for 14 days prior to the hea- hearing. The committee suggested three changes to a draft amendment of codified ordinance 1147.06, notice of public hearing requiring zoning variance or appeal application to have signs posted on their property 14 days before, prior to hearing. In section 2A, the cost of a replacement sign was changed from $25 to $10. In section 2C, it was suggested that signs be posted by the city zoning officer or his agent. In section 3, it was suggested that the applicants who move, uh, move, alter, or obscure a sign have their application terminated. Sack made a motion to request legislation, making the above amendments to the codified ordinance 1147.06. Notice of public hearing, what they seconded by Myers, motion passed by always vote. Number two, to reset the plating committee at 6:12 p.m.
Any questions for Mr. McKeever this evening? Moving on, Mr. Myers?
Health and safety met from 6:12 p.m. to 7:04 p.m. Members present, Mark McKeever, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item number one, the car show street closures. Busires Lot 168, perpetual order of police has requested permission to close several streets on June 8th for the Cruisin' with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show. Except for the date, there are no changes from the previous year's request. McKeever made a motion to request legislation authorizing the Safety Service Director to close the various streets on June 8th for the event, with his second by Myers. Motion passed by always vote. Number two, fire department equipment. Busires Fire Department Captain Chad Schwenley noted that during a recent fire, the department experienced an equipment failure on engine three, and that the broken part may be obsolete. Vehicle is 21 years old. The city is still in the running for a FEMA grant to help pay for a new engine. In the event the grant doesn't come through, an engine could be obtained via a short-term lease, or a new vehicle could be purchased, which can cost anywhere from $400,000 to $700,000. Objections were voiced to acquiring a used engine, given that it's potentially life-saving equipment, the matter was continued. Number three, Darrell Properties updated legislation from other communities concerning vacant buildings, rental property registration, and certificates of occupancy was distributed in addition to a streamlined version of the International Property Maintenance Code. Law Director Rob Ratliff distributed a news article on commercial vacancy rates in Sandusky following that city's drafting of a vacant building ordinance. It was stressed that the city should not penalize property owners who have not done wrong. Ratliff noted that the legislation under consideration could benefit emergency personnel by quickly informing them who is responsible for a property and its condition, and that it would shift the financial burden of caring for vacant properties from the city to the property owners. In order to gather comments from the public on these issues, a special health and safety meeting was technically scheduled for late April. Robert Irwin, 410 Baker Drive, spoke in opposition to a rental property registration. Number two, Myers recessed the health and safety committee at 7:04 p.m.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding the health and safety committee minutes? Mr. McKeever?
Yes, uh, on, uh, paragraph one, the second wrote by Mr. Shaw, not Mr. Myers.
I was wondering how I was reading. I said, no, the chairman's wasn't saying.
Okay, that should be you?
Andy.
Mr. Shaw?
And then on the back for recess, I'm guessing it should be on the number four.
Okay, could I have a motion for those two changes, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor, those two changes, say aye. Those say no. Motion passed, thank you. So I asked them out of right.
And then, Rattling, uh, from the Joint Regular Committee meetings, uh, item four, public participation, there was none. And number five, Mike Myers asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committee's motion by McKeever and second by Sack to adjourn at 7:04 p.m. Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, traffic commission, we don't have any minutes, but, uh, anybody have any traffic questions regarding anything for the mayor? Nothing? I think some closures and things are upcoming in the Service Director's report.
Right.
Okay, so we'll hit all those. Okay, nothing? I need a motion to accept the committee minutes as modified and related committee reports collectively.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Shaw, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, Mayor Esir, carry with your report.
Madam President, short report tonight, um, got a lot going on, been very, very busy, but a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I met with, uh, students, which I love to do. I met with them again, uh, this week at St. Bern's in Washington. Mayor Oder, even Guy and myself were invited to leadership presentation, spent the morning with the kids, and, uh, we learned a lot from them, you know? It's, it's really important is, is going there and, you know, being part of them and seeing the enthusiasm, it's very inspiring, you know? We're gonna be okay. One thing we wanted to stress with them, and, uh, and it's good for a political leader, whether you're in council, whatever, it's, uh, you have to have a heart for service. That's one thing we got through to them. We also mentioned that the courtesy of, uh, of the politics, you know, a lot of noise and, uh, social media attacks shouldn't discourage them from taking leadership positions in their communities and beyond. I was honored to have been invited to speak and be able to make a difference in the lives of future citizens of Busires and Crawford County. I mentioned that, that Busires is what we're doing to make ourselves a more attractive community. And he has some very good questions about that. We talked about parks and about our domestic energy, water, plant, water, and tree program. And then, uh, we had, Kelly and I had an important meeting with, uh, Sandusky Bicentennial Commission, a few years of that, to kind of see, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we wanted to see what we've been working for some of the other communities that have done this, know, uh, Ashland Sandusky, uh, in the last year or so, and had an excellent meeting, took lots of, lots of notes, and it was time well spent, and, uh, we're looking forward to the bicentennial in two years. So let's, uh, let's keep the momentum going. One thing you may notice, uh, Gary, can you get a picture of this? The, around the city hall, we have, uh, placed, uh, the, actually, high school students have placed, uh, little trifles, and there are pictures of graduating seniors. Very cool, uh, and they tell what their future plans are. This one's Jessica Molly, I hope I pronounced that right, Jessica? And she's going to attend 10 foster college veterinary technician and obtain STNA license, which is a really good thing. Uh, her favorite activities are art club, band, and peer mentoring. And, uh, if you get a chance to come down to city hall and look at all these, uh, wonderful things that the kids are doing, and then on the back, we have the events that are coming up for the school system in the next couple of months. So that's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor this evening? None? Moving on, we have the Service Safety Director's report.
Yeah, we'll get into Jeff's report here. He needs to refer an ODOT annual assault bid to the Service Committee. Bad news on number two, we received word that the committee foundation was not able to award the city funding to repair or replace the high dive at the pool. So we're only going to have one diving board this year. We just got the news this week. Uh, we're continuing to set applications for seasonal summer help, and please come to the mayor's office to pick up your application. For civil service, we have test results for the building clerk slash custodian applicants, and we'll be starting interviews this week. Had some questions about the compo sites now open on Wednesdays and Fridays from 8:00 to 2:00, and on Saturdays from 4:00 to 5:00. Very important day, Saturday, for, uh, the insurance committee sponsoring, um, a 5K walk slash run this, uh, this Saturday at All Noah Park, 10:00 a.m. We've already got a nice turnout. Registrations will still be accepted up to that day, it's $10, and that includes a t-shirt. Uh, you can register that day, you can drop your registration at the city hall or online. So, uh, the funds go to Safety Town, help purchase new bikes, so. And the weather's supposed to be outstanding, so come on out, join us. Number seven, sewer group bids, we're open for the project. Branson or Carroll will give their recommendation for the project, and the Board of Control will, will award the bid on, uh, this is April 3rd, it's actually going to be on April 4th, not April 3rd. Garbage pickup, uh, city offices will be closed Good Friday, April 19th, as usual. Um, Good Friday, uh, the Friday garbage pickup will be on the following Monday. Please have your garbage picked out by 7:00 a.m. Clean up week, I had some, had some questions about cleanup week. That's going to be Monday, May 6th to Friday, May 10th. You allow, uh, you allow 12 bags total, but no furniture. We do not pick up furniture anymore. We haven't done that for two years. All items must be in a bag, so check our, uh, city website again for that information. You got a couple crossings, uh, we close. Norfolk Southern will be doing repairs on, uh, starting April 8th to April 16th. Oakwood Avenue Crossing and the Hopely Avenue Crossing will be closed for about eight days. And from the 15th and 22nd, the Woodlong Avenue Crossing and the Warren Street Crossings will be closed. They'll be closed from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on those days. That's Jeff's report.
Any questions or comments regarding, we're planning to get those crossings fixed.
That's a whole lot of garbage. That's a whole lot of garbage.
True. Uh, any questions for, uh, regarding the Service Safety Director's report this evening? None?
I just, yeah, I just, there's no money for a high dive, anywhere? I thought it was all right. I thought it was all right. Some budget time, I, I don't know what happened to it.
The repairs of the pool, the actual...
Yeah, but, but we talked about, at budget, we talked about the low dive, but I didn't know anything was wrong with it.
Yeah, we had, we had applied for a grant last year for that, we were on prevention and, you know, yeah, so that was the only one in the budget, so. So we will apply again, yeah.
And the baby pool, is that ever going to be going through the...
Um, well, I will, it's, not in the next couple of weeks.
It hasn't for the last couple of years, hasn't.
Now, we're, we're doing repairs on every, you know, we'll, we'll, I'll get a report for you.
All right. Yeah, I know a lot of people are disappointed when they have little ones and, oh, place a little splash.
Just jump in, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on, lawn director, Mr. Rattling.
Thank you, Madam President. What really happened to your report?
Oh, wait a second, before we move on, I got a referral. We got assault bids. Who wants to talk about assault bids? Didn't we just get rid of all, all that? Now it's time to buy them again, okay? So I need a motion then to put this into the Service Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Okay, assault bids are in the Service Committee, thank you.
Always look in the hand.
I know. Well, this is a time where we got to get, uh, get those things lined up for the, yep? Now...
I still have nothing.
That hasn't changed, okay? Yes, certainly.
Tell me, what's the status with Burger King, lot owner?
The, um, uh, it is being transferred this week to CIC, and, uh, we're waiting on some paperwork there from closing agent, and we'll get that done. Uh, once it's in CIC's hands, we're waiting on some final plans, uh, and we'll just, uh, once those plans are in, we'll know exactly what we need to do as far as zoning and, uh, immediate, little adjustments. They're probably going to have some adjustments, because we've been around that lot. So CIC will take you through that zoning process, and we expect, um, uh, we've been contacting the company, we expect that probably to close late April or mid, and they, they willing to start up construction and all that, so.
Reason I ask too is I had a couple neighbors out there that have some concerns, and I was hoping that maybe it, you know, will there be something where some of the neighbors could put some of their concerns together with, with, uh, meeting with you and...
Certainly, and there'll also be, uh, public needs, uh, CIC will have public needs with zoning when they, when CIC goes to zoning, uh, after periods of change and stuff like that.
So all those will be announced?
Okay. I didn't know they had been working on that, that timeframe schedule. I didn't know they even was working on that timeframe schedule yesterday, so.
Okay, anything else for the Law Director? Okay, moving on, Auditor. Mrs. Schipper's not with us this evening. You have her safe and attached position dated March 31st, 2019, for review. Would you like to...
Yeah, she has two referrals. She wants to refer the $300,000 Allmiller Park Bond Anticipation Note, Series 2018, for discussion and renewal. The maturity date is June 18th of this year, and there are several steps to follow before that time. And then, number two, we need appropriation in the 255 Swing Pool Fund, 7315 pool, 24 materials and supplies in the amount of $12,000. Budget time last year, we did not budget for chemicals for the pool because we did not know what they would be, and now we do. So that is the reason for that. And those two referrals are stated for the Finance Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer these to Finance.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. That's taken care of. Page eight. Treasures report for February of 2019, oh, financials from the Auditor are also in there for you to take a look at. If you have questions or anything, they can be brought up Thursday at the Finance Committee, okay? The Treasurer also had a report for February, and that's in your packet, and we will, you take a look at that, we'll address that at the next meeting. I don't think Chief Kepke has anything else to say, okay?
Just one more thing. There's coffee with a copy of the great McDonald's, I wanted to thank Scott for hosting us, and I want to do it again, I hope.
Thank you. Fire Chief's not with us this evening. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Sack, to accept the city officers' report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is the time for visitors' input regarding reports of standing in special committees and of city officers. Does anyone care to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have two pieces of legislation. We have an ordinance and a resolution. Ordinance number 23, 2019, amending and supplementing section 1147.06 entitled Notice of Public Hearing of Chapter 1147 entitled Appeals and Variances, Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of these codified ordinances of the city of Busaras, Ohio. That's referred to the Plating Committee. Resolution number 211, 2019, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Busaras, Ohio, to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles, except authorized emergency personnel, on Saturday, June 8th, 2019, from 7:00 AM Eastern Daylight Time to 12:00 AM Midnight Eastern Daylight Time on East Warren Street for the food court from 12:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time to 12:00 AM Midnight Eastern Daylight Time along Sandusky Avenue, from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 100 blocks of Mansfield Street and Washington Square, the 100 block of East and West and Salir Streets, the 100 block of West Warren Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Streets respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Walnut Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue, in order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show parade route for an expected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of Police, Busaras Lodge Number 68, must provide for and erect all signs needed for reroute state highways according to the directions of the Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and Chief of Police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through subject areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during a force at time period through the city of Busaras, Ohio. That is referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Ordinance number 23-2019 is referred back to Plating. Resolution 211-2019 is referred back to Health and Safety Committee. Did I do the accept? I didn't do that. I need to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKeever to refer, accept this as the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is a time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone have any comments about the legislation this evening? None? Do we need a recess?
No.
Okay. The committee reports on pending legislation, Finance Committee? I'm sorry, Plating Committee.
Yeah, Plating Committee is favorable to ordinance 23-2019 for zoning variance notification protocol.
Thank you. Health and Safety Committee?
Health and Safety is favorable to Resolution 211-2019, car show, car show street closures.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Sack? And Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw.
Your choice.
My choice. Okay, Mr. Shaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. Prefer the consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 23-2019, which is the zoning variance notification protocol, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 23-2019?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-2019, the zoning variance notification protocol is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution number 211-2019, which are the car show street closures, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Resolution number 211, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 211-2019?
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution number 211-2019, the car show street closures is duly adopted. Thank you. Nice deep voice, yeah. Any unfinished business anyone would like to bring up this evening? No? Moving on to new and miscellaneous business. Saturday, April the 6th, this Busaras, the city of Busaras, Spring Wellness 5K Walk to Benefit Safety Town is at 10:00 AM out at Allmiller Park. It costs $10 to get in that. You can register, 419-562-6767, at extension 221, or just show up that morning, right? 10:00 AM, is that when it's, you're saying go, or is that when we're starting to?
That's when it starts.
That's when it starts.
If they're early, yeah.
If they're early, okay.
It's also a run, walk and chat.
It's a walk and a run?
Yeah.
Nine forty-five is on time.
Nine forty-five is on time, okay. Monday, April the 8th, this is the Crawford County Community Concert Association, Dallas String Quartet at 7:00 PM at the elementary school. There are single tickets available for $20. You can contact them at CrawfordCommunityConcert.com. Saturday, April 13th, the Easter Bunny Egg Hunt is at the Busaras Area YMCA from 10:00 AM to noon. It's for those 12 and younger. It's free, no charge at all to that. And they're still collecting some candy, it's out of the way. If anybody has, it's got to be wrapped individually, so if you've got any extra, you want to head that direction, gladly accept it up there. Saturday, April 17th, is also the Kiwanis Community Garage Sale at Crawford County Haregrounds, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There's no charge to be out there, and there's always plenty of parking out there. On Wednesday, April the 17th, meet the candidates night, sponsored by the Busaras Fighter, Firefighters IAFF, local 1120, and the Busaras Fire Department and the Busaras High School, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. On Friday, April the 19th, this Good Friday, City Hall will be closed. You've already heard from the mayor that the trash pickup will be on Monday.
Yes, that's right.